All right, I'm gonna call the Plaza Ten meeting to order at six twenty-eight. All right, discussion and possible action on the following items, consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Amanda Fenwick.
I'll second.
Second by Jeff Terrell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item B, approved budget for fiscal year twenty-five. I think we've all, this is just an updated budget for Plaza Ten, it reflects the, um, the lights and the other projects we've done, and this is the twenty, or the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Go for it.
I'll move to approve the twenty-five budget.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Fenwick, second by Mr. Fisher. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Nice job Cheryl.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimous. You wanna finish it Randy? Okay. All right, and item C, review and approve World Division Quote oh five four three nine for banners in the amount of fourteen hundred and four dollars. I think this is just to replace the banners at the front of the island that got Hurricane barreled and other atrocities committed against them.
So my only question, is this to replace all of them, or just the ones that were damaged?
Um, I think there was like thirty-six damaged, and we ordered forty.
Okay. I wasn't sure how many there were, so I was sure that covered. Perfect.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve, uh, the, uh, World Division Quote, uh, for the banners for one thousand four hundred and four dollars.
Motion by Mr. Fisher.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Fenwick. Um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. And we'll adjourn the meeting at six-thirty.
Regular city council meeting October fifteenth, the order at six-thirty-one. Uh, next on the agenda is pledge of allegiance. We do have a quorum. Okay, reports from council. Uh, Councilman Ed Waters.
Uh, not very much today, uh, just a little from the waterfront, uh, they'd sent out the remainder of their, uh, letters for corrections on, uh, damage for barrel hurricane on some of these. Uh, some of them are quite extensive. Um, and that's about all I have.
All right, thank you Ed. Uh, Rick Fisher?
Uh, they had a Parks meeting, uh, last Tuesday, uh, one o'clock, unfortunately I had a sudden commitment that came up and I was unable to make it, sorry Mary. But, uh, I'm gonna let you, uh, uh, fill in on the report, uh, on that, uh, slot. Other than that, uh, nothing to report.
All right, uh, thank you Rick. Uh, Jeff Terrell?
Uh, nothing to report this week.
All right, uh, Alex Scanlon?
My seat on planning and zoning is available to anyone who did not get placed on a committee but applied to another one, if anyone really wants to contribute.
All right, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Amanda Fenwick.
Um, so I've got a couple of things Mayor. A couple of meetings ago, I've reported that the Texas Windstorm Insurance Agency Board had voted to increase insurance, uh, rates on our windstorm, windstorm by ten percent. That went to the Texas Insurance Board who, uh, denied that. So, um, we should not be seeing increases. Now, I know some people probably do, I don't know what the answer to that is, other than contact your insurance agent. Feel free to reach out to Mayor Middleton's office. Um, Senator Middleton was super active in ensuring that that increase did not happen. Um, and then Saturday, October twenty-sixth is the Bay Area Medication Takeback Day. Um, they have a lot of different locations where you can drop off, um, any unused or expired medicine that you don't want in your house. Um, the Kima Police Department's the closest one to us. Um, Nassau Bay also has one, Seabrook Lake City Police Department, but, um, ten to two, ten AM to two PM, they will accept, um, no sharps, but they'll accept all other expired or any other medication, um, that you don't want. And, um, that's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you Amanda. Um, I just got a couple of things. Um, one, one thing that came to me today was, um, I guess there's been sometimes that people ask for happy birthday to, or something to be put on the marquee and it didn't make it. I'm assuming they weren't real happy. Please try to get that to the people in the office a day or two ahead of time. That gives Jorge and them time to, to go out and get it up. Uh, we wouldn't wanna miss anybody's birthday or any special message somebody had to, someone. Uh, I promise you, they don't do that on purpose, but if we don't get it in time, sometimes these guys have a sick day, or they need to be off, and they're not there. If you don't get it there a couple of days ahead of time, it may not get up. So, be, be reminded of that, just get it to the ladies at the office as soon as you can. Um, while we're talking about Jorge and Odie, I'll just say this. We, we've had some individuals reaching out to Jorge and Odie individually, wanting them to go do things. Please refrain from that, please run all of that through the city administrator. You need Jorge and Odie to go do something, please contact their boss and let him orchestrate that. We had an incident this weekend that cost us some money. Uh, some people got into this, this room again, and we're playing with the facilities in there, trying to get a recording done, and I, I can't say they did it, but it ends up, the, uh, UPS went bad this weekend and cost us quite a bit of money to replace that. They had to come out today and do it. Uh, so, please, please call Mike if you need Jorge and Odie to set this place up, you need anything from that room. There will be no more access to that room. We have spent a lot of money in that room, uh, lately on things that are messed up and missing and no recordings and things of that nature. So, uh, that's all I'll say about that. Uh, you will notice Jorge and Odie moving around the island, taking down some rotten trees. Some dead trees that are in the right of way. We're trying to be proactive with that, there are quite a few of them that are, are dead. I, I know the one right out here was about to fall across the street. So, we will not be coming on your property to do that, that'll be done in the right of way only. So, please beware of them. I know they were out here blocking the road today, and a few people got upset because they had to go down my street and go around. Uh, they, they need to be safe out there while they're doing that work. Um, there's gonna be a witch's ride, I don't wanna steal all Georgette's thunder, but that's coming up this weekend, sponsored by the Civic Club if I'm not mistaken. Uh, Oktoberfest is happening this weekend at the brewery. Um, I would not encourage anyone to come and see me tap the keg in my Lederhosen, that is probably not a really pretty sight. You may not forget that sight, some things you cannot unsee. Um, I'm also working with, um, Amer waste on the hazardous waste disposal still. Uh, they have still got a lot of dumpsters out, believe it or not, from barrel that they haven't got back, so she hasn't been able to work that in the schedule. But I am reminding her weekly about, we need to get that done. Uh, I know it's, we're past the hurricane season, and knock on wood, we had the one and that was it. We could end up like Florida, I'm glad we did not. Um, those people down there need all the help they can get. Um, I know there's several ways we can donate for that, so if you guys wanna do that, please reach out. Um, but I will get back to you later on that, as soon as I hear from, uh, Janelle over there about when we can schedule that. They're gonna man it all, they're gonna do it all, we gotta do is tell them what, when and where, and they'll come and do it. Um, that's pretty much all I got for my report, so we'll move into, uh, staff reports. Chief Donaldson?
Mayor and council, today I was notified that, uh, Officer Brian Graham, he'll be putting his two weeks' notice in from full-time to part-time, uh, reserve. So he'll be, uh, out sixteen hours a month, wants to spend more time with his grandkids and his wife, and, uh, I understand.
No. No, we're gonna vote on that, right? I hate to lose him, he's a great officer. I'm, I mean, I've got a lot of compliments from the citizens on Brian, that's gonna be a big loss. Is that all you got? Okay. All right, uh, Mike Cram?
Thank you Mayor. Well, that works. Um, we met with Colliers today and NL Concrete, who was awarded the contract for the east parking lot. Just some updates for the public to be aware of. Um, Colliers will be acting as a project manager, they'll be out there pretty much every day. Uh, the parking lot's gonna be completed in two L-shaped sections. The first section will be the one to the east, closest to, um, Galveston Bay Brewery. Uh, there will remain two points of ingress egress at all times, uh, for both of the sections to be done. It should be, it's expected to take right at ninety days, scheduled to begin the twenty-first, which is next Monday, after the mayor exposes himself in Lederhosen. And, uh, hopefully completed by January twentieth. We'll have a final, um, after the meeting today, there were some adjustments we have to make to the timeline, so I'll be getting one of those, uh, unamended timeline within the next few days. Um, the, uh, one thing we're gonna have to do to keep down the impact with the limited parking is try to do all the pours, like in the, the concrete pours. Each one, uh, should probably take between five and seven hours, uh, for each phase of it. And they're gonna try to start those anytime between midnight and two AM on the day that they actually pour, so they can get those big vehicles in and out before the commerce starts for those, uh, businesses right in that area, so they'll be the least impacted. Um, we're gonna try to put something, we'll put something out with Teresa on social media when we have anything major that's going to happen, so that we can keep people posted on what's happening with it. We'll make sure that we communicate with the residents who live within three hundred feet of the area, if we're going to have any loud construction noises after certain times, but that shouldn't be a big deal. Um, the only anomaly there will be the, the early morning concrete pours. Um, but we'll keep everybody updated on social media as we go through. Uh, Cheryl and Christie attended TML conference last week and made good use of their time. They came back with a possible vendor for, for financial software that will also handle payroll, timesheets, and perhaps assist with permitting. The company's also on HGAC, right Cheryl? HGAC? Or, one of, one of the cooperative purchasing things, which certainly simplifies the procurement process for us. Um, speaking of that, Cheryl and I are putting finishing touches on RFPs for mowing services and IT services. Um, my hat's off to Cheryl, hers is far better prepared than mine, because she's got really cool maps with labels and borders and everything else for all the various places that the, the mowing contractor will have to bid on. Um, it's taken her quite a bit of time, so Cheryl, thank you very much. Angie sent out, as Ed mentioned, Angie sent out notification letters to waterfront leaseholders noting needing repairs, and she's, she's already seen some significant activity uh, toward remedying those issues. Um, as I mentioned last meeting, we were going to increase, uh, some code enforcement efforts, and we have several cases moving forward. As we hoped, many of the property owners are complying with mowing and cleanup efforts on those properties, however, there are some that will be moving to court. Um, and at least one that may end up in a public hearing before it's resolved. I, I have a feeling, based on my communication with that property owner, that she's not gonna really wanna do much with it. Um, I received some complaints about the pool being closed on the holiday yesterday, my apologies for that, I believe that was an internal effort or an internal mistake on our part and not the, uh, the part of the pool company. I spoke with them today, and I think we may have locked that up instead, so, uh, for the citizens and residents and, uh, members of the pool, I'll, I'll try to do a better job of making sure we have that open, especially when we have holidays involving school, um, being out. So, that's all I have.
Where's my, where's my ruler? Put your hand out. All right, thank you Mike. Um, moving on, uh, committee reports, uh, Rosen Drainage.
Well, some of this information's gonna be slightly old news, because I think you already approved it. Uh, since our last, you know, our last meeting, we, um, a bridge study, this has to do with the, uh, uh, we're, instead of waiting for the whole park, we're gonna, we're doing a study to see what it needs to be done to upgrade it in order to get it up to, so it can last, you know, much longer. Um, after that's done, we will go ahead with, through Colliers with, um, the rest of the, like, one is, liberated forest, well, that's gonna be in concrete, and then the next one after that will be in, this is the whole, so that, that's gonna be an asphalt.
All right, thank you Tom. Uh, next up is Parks.
Hello. Uh, today, I just have a few things to report. We did meet, like Rick said, we met on October eighth. We did have a new member join, um, from the previous meeting where, um, recommendations were put in for Melissa Stoffer, and so she's now joining our committee, committee. Um, it's sad that Diana Cronister has left our committee, which is very understandable, because she's still taking on a very big role. She's moving over to leading the Christmas committee, if I'm correct, with, uh, Civic Club, so she will still be in charge of all the Christmas decorations at the entrance every year, which is a huge job and undertaking, so that's very, seem, want to miss her. Um, she has very long, many, many, many years on the Park Committee, for those of you that are unaware of that. Um, the next thing, we do have, um, a couple of playground projects underway. I was able to meet, um, and a few of our other committee members with two playground reps. Um, and I'm working with one of them in particular to get some bids for, um, some improvements, some cleanups to grow and deep hole, and so I'm gonna be getting that over to Mike, so he can look over those numbers and see if that works. And, um, the other thing, we had another committee member have a interesting, um, proposition to reach out to Kima, and specifically the park located on Sixth Street, its, um, technical name is the James A. Foster Park, and right past Stewart Elementary. They have recently striped their playground, or not their playground, sorry, their, um, basketball court for pickleball. And so people are going over there and using that facility, um, but I guess in the pickleball world, it's, um, a friendly thing to get a storage container to store a net and equipment needed, and then they share the code amongst each other. Um, and so that's something that she was interested in looking into, and if Kima would be willing, and to put a box there, and that's something clear like chores could utilize as well. Um, so that's something that she's gonna continue working on and possibly get back to us for our next meeting with some updates. Uh, the next meeting is November twelfth, at one PM, and that's all we have.
All right, thank you Mary. Uh, moving on, waterfront compliance.
Nothing from the waterfront.
Okay. Uh, moving to planning and zoning. Oh, you got it booked tonight, huh?
Mayor Council, uh, planning and zoning did have a meeting, uh, scheduled for the seventh of October, uh, for Star Harbor landing. They were requesting replating, and apparently they did not meet the requirements of the state ordinance, so they're going back and working on that, and will be going to the backboard, uh, to, uh, plan and zone, uh, once it's, uh, meet the requirement.
Okay.
Uh, zoning board of adjustments, I think, uh, already discussed this, uh, there was, uh, you know, the thirtieth of September, and the board of adjustments to approve, uh, the order of parking, uh, the periods that had been requested for the parking lot update.
We haven't discussed that, we left that for you.
You brought it up.
Thank you Patrick. All right, next up is, uh, Civic Club report.
Mayor, coming up is Witch's Ride and Lizards, but it's not until the twenty-sixth,
Oh.
which is the following weekend. Uh, the parade lineup, I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm sorry, I misspoke, I thought it was this weekend.
The parade lineup will be at six-thirty over near Galveston Bay, and then the parade will go on the island at seven, and we're gonna have a mix and mingle at Galveston Bay afterwards. Uh, the next day, on the twenty-seventh, we're gonna have the children's Halloween party, which is gonna be about two o'clock, we're still trying to iron out the details on that. Uh, if you've seen, we've posted the Thanksgiving dinner volunteers, uh, signup links, it's gonna be on November ninth. We are in need of several other volunteers, so if you have a chance to take a look at that and sign up, we would greatly appreciate it. You may have also seen that I sent out a survey, trying to do a survey about bringing Islander newsletter back. Uh, it's gonna be a scaled-down version, just something that's gonna be more amenable to the, for cost and efficiency of getting information out to the residents. I know a lot of people, um, miss it, you know, we're trying to figure out what is the happy medium for the Civic Club to continue to produce this. Right now, I think our residents, uh, we used to print between five hundred and six hundred copies, and we're currently at a hundred and thirty-three residential household members. So I would still like to see the membership increase, in order to help kinda offset some of those costs for producing that, even though we did sell, um, advertising, the Civic Club was still absorbing a lot of the cost due to the size of the Islander. So we're working on that, we hope to have some feedback, uh, in the next month or so, maybe by, by our November meeting. Uh, this weekend though, we, the Galveston Bay is having their Oktoberfest, and they wanted me to, um, let everybody know they are having a golf cart parade on Saturday, I think at twelve-thirty, for all, all those that want to attend. So, thank you.
All right, thank you Georgette. Uh, moving on, economic development.
We have, uh, EDC, the most notable is that, uh, we have four positions up for renewal. Uh, we had seven applicants for those, uh, uh, spots, which is good. Uh, Johnny has decided to step down, so assuming everybody that's on there is reappointed, we have one open spot. Now, that's obviously up to council, we were supposed to give a clear recommendation, which we unfortunately did not manage to do. The only recommendation we gave was for the existing ones to be reelected, which leaves one spot, but again, this is all up to council.
So, so your recommendation, just so I got this straight, was reappoint the three and leave council to decide the fourth, is that correct?
Yes.
The three existing that reapplied, that's y'all's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Thomas. All right, moving on.
I have one question, you said there were seven applications?
Yes. Yes.
I only got six.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, six, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Public school math, I'm just making sure I was doing it right, thanks.
Moving on, we'll go to the, uh, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the city council if the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda. The comments may be made now or at the time the agenda item is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual, there'd be no yielding of a time. Would anybody like to address the council? Okay, moving on, we'll close the public comments, and we'll move to the consent agenda. Um, we have a motion for the consent agenda.
Uh, I move with one change to the council meeting minutes, the spelling of La Mer Cafe, it's L-A and then M-E-R, I think it was La Mer in the notes. So with that, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from Amanda.
I'll second that.
Got a second from Ed. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item ten, new business. Discussion and possible action may be taken on the following, uh, designation of representative and alternate to Houston and Galveston Area Council General Assembly. Current representatives are Amanda Fenwick and the alternate is Alex Scanlon. So, we are requested to appoint someone this evening to those two positions. Um, I'm gonna start with, would you two like to remain in the position you're in? I don't know, I, you wanting to come off of everything, and you're promoting everybody to step up, I'm just checking. Okay.
If that's the case, I'll make a motion that we, uh, appoint our, reappoint our current representatives, Amanda Fenwick and, uh, Alex Scanlon as the alternate for the, uh, representatives for the General, uh, Assembly.
Okay, and a motion by Rick?
I'll say.
Got a second by Jeff? Any discussion? None from you. No, I'm kidding. All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Uh, we're gonna move on to, uh, item B, consideration of approval of contract for Colliers Engineering and Design to design all roadways and associated drainage specifications for the city of Clear Lake Shores. Uh, Mike Cram?
Thank you Mayor, this is something that, uh, Alex and I have been working with Colliers on to have basically a standardization for all roadway design, um, and associated drainage, uh, improvements or necessities to go with that for each individual type of roadway that we want in, in Clear Lake Shores, so that regardless of who we're using, we have a single set of standards that we can implement, and it makes our RFP process easier and all that kinda stuff. And these are established designs that come from other major cities, um, that are industry standards, as, as Alex kind of accepted it. Uh, so we're, we're comfortable with this moving forward, and we ask that the council consider approving that.
I know that Alex, working with Rosen Drainage, Alex has had a lot of input on, on that prior to us hiring Colliers, so I'm sure he's thankful someone else has taken the reins on that, and he doesn't have to do one every single time. So thanks for all that hard work Alex.
Mayor, can I amend my earlier report to include something I forgot? Um, in case anybody sees them, along with this Rosen Drainage stuff that we're trying to work on as, as an overall project for the city. Um, you will see surveyors, we, um, are going to be surveying the, um, the part from Deep Hole, and the streets moving, um,
West?
west from Deep Hole, and Alex, is that the final portion?
And south.
And south, yes. So, but that should be the final portion to get the drainage system done?
No, that'll probably take us to about fifty percent of the whole island, but that's the most critical area.
For this year?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
We, we may do it again next summer, we'll see.
All right, sorry about that.
Okay, do we have a motion for that contract?
I'll motion to approve the contract for Colliers Engineering and Design to generate the roadway and drainage standards.
Okay, and a motion by Alex?
I'll second it.
Got a second by Rick, any discussion on that subject?
Yeah, just to elaborate on what Mike said, basically we're go, we've, you've all seen an asphalt road be placed, you've all seen a concrete road, you've all seen a culvert, they all look the same. We've been paying to have those designs completed over and over and over again, so this is basically just establishing, Clear Lake Shores will put in this type of road each time, so whenever we go to bid a project, we put in the same concrete road, and it- so whenever we go to bid a project, we put in the same concrete road, and it should expedite future projects, hopefully.
So you're saying it'll be money well spent getting it all standardized, if we use it?
Did you see the look he gave you?
I tried to look away.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Moving on, uh, we'll go to item C. Uh, consideration and approval of contract authorizing Colliers Engineering to design and design to hire a firm that will assess the Clear Lake Road Bridge and develop a repair and maintenance schedule. Mike Cram?
Uh, Council, I, I passed out a piece of paper for all of you. That was the original quote, um, attachment that Colliers received from Aguirre. Uh, Colliers went back to the bargaining table with them and basically told them that's unacceptable. So not that figure, but the eighteen, or the sixteen thousand dollar figure you see on the agenda item is the actual amount we're going to be asking you to approve. Um, and that will be amended with the packet. Christie can go back in and add that as a pre, uh, portion of the packet after the fact.
Okay. We have a motion on that item?
I'll motion to approve the contract authorizing Colliers to hire a firm to assess the Clear Lake Road Bridge and develop and repair a maintenance schedule.
Okay, got a motion by Alex? Got a second by Amanda. Any discussion?
Mike, this includes an evaluation of the pedestrian bridge project as part of the study, correct? That's what I read in there. They're going to evaluate the existing bridge to attach or put one next to it. That's all incorporated in here, so it's.
They're going to see if that's actually a possibility to just attach it to the existing structure so that it doesn't have to be built as a freestanding structure.
That would save a lot of money. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. We'll move on to item D, consideration and approval of service authorization agreement from High Tide Land Surveying LLC to field, collect, convert, and ditch topography, along with described right-ofways Clear Lake Road, Ivy Road, East Shore Drive, Hawthorne, and Grove Road. Mike Cram?
And that's where I just got ahead of myself on my report. Um, assuming council approves this, then you will start seeing the surveyors out here to be coming from Deep Hole, moving west and south.
Okay. We have a motion on that item?
I'll make a motion to approve and consideration approval of service authorization agreement from High Tide Land Survey.
Okay, and a motion by Jeff?
I'll second it.
Got a second by Rick. Any discussion? No questions? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Brings us down to item E, review and approve Economic Development Corporation recommendations for board members of term expiring October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. As you heard Thomas say, uh, the best we could get out of EDC are three of the four, although they had seven applicant, or six applicants. So their recommendation, as you heard, are to reappoint the three that are already on that board, and, um, they're going to leave it up to you to appoint the fourth. Um, you know, we, we don't have to appoint a fourth. Um, I, I don't see why we wouldn't if you have six applicants. Now, I don't know why we wouldn't appoint somebody unless you're just trying to find somebody else and you don't like one of the six. You guys have seen all of them, so I'll leave that up to you guys. Um, if you have any motions, I'd like to hear them.
I'd say, I'll go ahead. I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Susan Baker, Thomas Holland, and Mike Pons. And then for the fourth position, I would like to appoint Bob Rolfe.
Okay, we got a motion by Rick. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, got a second by Ed. Is there any discussion?
A while ago, we changed the ordinances to allow business owners on there. We've got two. We don't want to appoint one of them on here. But we changed the ordinance a while ago to specifically allow that, and this is an opportunity. I, I don't really have any problem with any, either way. Just, you know, if anyone has a.
Well, I know one of them, uh, one of the, uh, applicants that was on there that, uh, is, uh, not a resident, has been, uh, let's see, to put it nice, has been stirring the pot here, uh, recently. Um, I can see putting him on there would just, uh, create a lot of tension, uh, within the, uh, EDC. And I just, and again, I, I know Bob, uh, you know, have, uh, dealt with him on, uh, with, with several things, and I think he would be a, I just personally think he'd be a really good fit there with, uh, EDC.
I, I like Bob as well. That's a nice, I wish Bob would, are you on the P and Z already?
Yes.
Oh, dang it.
Oh, your hat and back there. I couldn't see you from Mike's hat. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any more discussion? Your mic's on. Do you want to say something? Nope. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to give you your due, man. Um, all in favor? Okay. Those opposed? Not used to saying that a lot, but I'm looking at you. I'm going to recognize you before I move forward. So motion passes four to one. Um, that'll bring us down to number eleven, the executive session. A governmental body may conduct an executive session to discuss matters dealing with individual officers or employees. Specifically, this exception allows governmental bodies to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Come out of the executive session at seven-thirty, back into the regular meeting. Are there any motions coming out of the executive session? Having none, there's no action. Uh, we will close the meeting at seven.